Start this meeting with my allegiance. My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. And to the faithful and grateful people of justice and law.
Yeah, I can get a lot of stuff in front of me.
Oh, we'll get it.
Ah, this is a...
We'll make a nice little meat pie for it. Put it in his mailbox. Can you view it?
Send it to the whole market.
Yep. Stuff a little extra. Okay. Addition or deletion?
So, just two additions. There's the VLCT Town Road and Bridge Standards Adoption Form that we've been sent and will need to... Basically Keith and I, when Keith and I met with Chris Taft this winter, they went through it with us. And so, we'll just need to talk about that and if we're ready to knight start it. And there's also the Grants and Aid Intent to Participate Form. And that's just letting them know that we intend to be a part of the program. That will also be easy.
Do you want to just do that when we go into Keith's stuff then maybe?
Yeah.
Seems good, okay.
And that's all, no deletions.
Perfect. Introduction for everybody. No introduction, I guess.
Everybody sign in.
How about the minutes? I thought everything looked in order. I didn't see anything that jumped out at me.
Coming back. It's my change. Thank you, myself.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as printed.
No, second.
Any discussion? Favor?
I think so.
Both carried. Thank you. He's really honest. He's honest with me.
It's too far. I wanted to copy.
No pre-requested?
No.
No announcements?
Um, I would just like to announce that this is my new computer.
Super. How's it working? Awesome.
It's just dreamy.
Okay. And how do you, how do you back it up?
We haven't come to that point.
Okay.
But I actually, so I have a, myself, I have a big external hard drive that I could, that I'm planning on taking all the documents from what I have been using to put them onto this. But then I'm going to speak with Deb and see what, in terms of like minutes and agendas and things like that. I think that since that'll get sent to her, that might be backed up.
Right.
So, it might just be a matter of getting one of those big external hard drives for the town and just me periodically backing it up that way.
Just so like you can keep the grant stuff and stuff like that that she wouldn't have to deal with?
Yeah, and occasionally I can just back that up and then should something happen to this, there will be a external little box that has all the bylaws on it.
Right.
So, I'm going to talk to Deb about just pricing that out and seeing.
I just, I just want to make sure that we have some redundancy because it was quite a lot of inconvenience last time.
Yes.
You can get those as SSE solid-state with no moving parts?
Yeah, that's what they're buying us now.
Yeah, it's all electronic.
Yeah, they're nice.
Okay. Super. Excellent. It works fine. It's got plenty of...
Yeah, everything's great.
Plenty of everything that it needs.
So far.
Okay. Super. Great, thank you. Did Hal leave a report or not?
I have nothing.
We've gone back and forth, but I'm just a few issues, a few subjects that we were talking about, but I have, if he sent you no written reports.
He reached out to me because there are some forms that he's planning on doing as updating for.
Right. I suggested that.
Yeah, so he, and I suggested that he, there are plenty, I did a Google search and there are a lot of free options online to convert PDFs to Word. And he said he was going to be participating in.
Well, he found something that for $15 a month.
Yeah, he told me about that too, but then I, I just searched free PDF to document converter and so many came up. And then he asked if I could retype all of the forms, which I don't really feel that I, I can try to chip away at it, but I think there are other things that might be more.
Right, okay.
Would take priority for me right now, but...
It just, just seemed like $15 for a monthly fee to just do a few forms didn't, didn't really seem necessary.
Yeah, he asked me if I felt that there was enough use with other town officials and I said that he should reach out to the folks that are here to see if, that I thought that for a few forms, I didn't know that a subscription would be.
Right, that's kind of what I was thinking too.
Especially when I think you can find several other options, so. Yeah, I haven't heard anything back from him, but I told him, told you. I sent him some links, other links to.
You undo it for us, Frank?
What, what format are they in?
Uh, PDF.
They're in PDF now?
So, like they've been scanned in, you know, when you do a scan and it converts to a PDF. And to my knowledge, there's no way to, sometimes in a PDF, you're able to select that you want to switch it to a Word document, but I don't think that's the type of hard.
If it's a straight image file, you can't, you can't do that.
It's a, right, so that's what we're dealing with.
We have to change some, like numbers and fees and stuff like that, so we gotta get an adjustable document, so.
Yeah, I mean depending, the forms aren't really that lengthy, like I know the ones that I've done, so it's really not the end of the world if they have to be retyped.
Okay.
Um, it's like, you know, but I think that there are ways.
I can look around a little bit myself too. Maybe we have some options?
Yeah.
In our systems to do that too, so.
I have some too.
Okay. Well, super then. Yeah, he had, he had a few, he had a few questions and just, just had a few things he, he mentioned to me about some of the, what's going on and stuff. If he sent no report to...
No, I have any for sure.
Nothing to you, okay. Planning Commission, Harry?
Yes, um, I handed out a report to everybody, so let me just read it into the record. The first item on our report is about our Community Values Mapping Project in cooperation with Vermont Fish and Wildlife. And at the top of the page, I've got a note indicating that our first Community Values Mapping Project public meeting is going to be scheduled for, tentatively right now, for Wednesday, September 25th at 7:00 PM. And we're hoping to be able to have it at the Meadowwee School because we'd like to get a crowd and we'd like to have enough room to do it. We found, we met in this room last night and if we had a road craft, it would be tough to have enough tables for people. Could do it upstairs, another possibility. Okay. On Monday the 1st, which was last night, Monica Prisperhart of the Vermont Fish and Wildlife led six commissioners of the Planning Commission and three members of the community in a mock-up mapping exercise. Participation was enthusiastic and enlightened. Wouldn't you say that?
Very enlightened.
The PPC reaffirmed its commitment to follow through with the Vermont Fish and Wildlife in completing a full community values mapping at the town of Polat. Monica also volunteered her time to assist us with our obligation to prepare maps required by Act 171. That is the forest blocks and wildlife habitat connectors as part of the town's land use plan. And I have the map that we worked on last night where we marked up. So, if anybody's interested in taking a look at it after the meeting, I've got it inside. Item two is small-scale wind electric generation. At our June 24th meeting, we had a presentation by Jason Day from Star Winds Turbine. And he presented the technology, I had mentioned at the last meeting that we were going to have this.
Yeah.
And we were reserving our judgment on wind power for, as being appropriate for Polat. So, he went through the technology of small wind turbines on a small, small scale for communities that did not wish to develop alternative energy sources on a huge scale. Jason described the project he is developing for the Curthousian Monastery on the west slope of Equinox Mountain. He defines small scale as having a maximum of height of less than 100 feet to the top of the rotor blade at its highest vertical position. Power levels between 5 kW and 45 kW and low noise performance. He said that the towers can be raised and lowered by a hydraulic mechanism for maintenance and that the towers can withstand winds of 150 miles an hour. I guess if we had winds greater than that, you could lower them hydraulically and they wouldn't be damaged. The PPC took comments from the community after the presenter left the meeting, with some being enthusiastic for such use in town and others as enthusiastically again. So, we need further discussion. PPC will follow up on whether this type of development is suitable for Polat with community input at future meetings in preparation for the next revision of the town plan. In our 2016 town plan, as you recall, we said that we didn't have appropriate sites for wind. We were thinking large scale. Item three is the Polat bylaws that they reported on last, at your last meeting. Hal Wilkin, zoning administrator, indicated that only minor revisions in legal language is required to make the bylaws more enforceable. So, we're going to go through that at our next meeting. And it should be easy, so it wasn't the detailed schedule that he had involved, we should be able to do this pretty quickly. Item four, I'm giving an energy coordinator meeting on the enhanced energy plan. The town is obligated by state mandate to prepare six maps showing where the town would like to build renewable energy generation sites to comply with the state commitment to reducing dependency on carbon-based fuels by 90% by 2050. The Rutland Region Planning Commission has provided the town with draft maps showing where the potential sites for development are as a basis for our development program. The maps will be updated by the PPC with assistance from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission will become part of our enhanced energy plan. The six maps are existing energy showing existing renewable energy resources as of 2016 when they put the map together. Solar energy potential, wind energy potential, biomass energy potential, hydro, hydro energy potential, and local strengths, local constraints, and locally preferred locations. And the issue now is how to present this to the community and get community input on a preferred location for development. So, we're going to be, I'll be talking with the Planning Commission about some sort of event similar to our community mapping program. Maps. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Have you guys got any questions?
I have a small, maybe, maybe suggestion, maybe send me off here, but we struggle a lot on the school board with getting public participation. And at our recent meeting, we talked about having some student presentations at our board meetings that would maybe draw in parents and then get some more members of the community. And the kids often do projects about energy. They're very forward-thinking at Meadowwee about like renewable resources and stuff like that. If you could get a teacher involved in getting the kids to work on a project like that.
It's interesting you said that because it reminds me of something that we discussed last night, but I forgot to put in my report. Monica did indicate that she has had a number of programs where, she started a community values program with kids in schools. And the parents were there as well.
Yeah.
And then she'd follow up with, with all adult sessions. But she said there was a lot of great input from kids.
I think it's a good, they're super into this. I mean, this is their planet. They're going to get some.
So, for the community values and it'd be, yeah, I could look into the energy as well.
And you might draw in some public participation.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good option. Good suggestion.
Get the, trick the parents to come by bringing the kids, get the kids involved, perfect.
You get mom and dad and grandpa and grandma and there you go.
Great idea.
The kicker is the state is mandating that we do renewable energy. We participate in statewide, all the towns to achieve this goal. So, there's, it has to be mapped out. It has, there has to be places we have to make this available in certain areas and this is, this is the kicker.
Okay. Anything else for Harry? Thank you. Keith?
Could have a lot, put the rock on the road. Going well.
Going well, yep.
Maybe tomorrow, maybe not, we'll be out on the Harret Road. But we'll be close anyway. Head west to see what happens over there.
When, when are you working?
Heard nothing on the grader.
When are you working with Rupert?
Well, when they're ready. They, actually, they suggested they might want to do some down below the Rupert Line on the end of the Harret Road. So, if that's the case, we are going there before we move to Bubba.
Right, yep.
So, and then they have several small spots in Rupert that'll be, will be a lot of moving. But I think Tommy will move it with his, with his equipment over there, so it won't be a tie-up or a schedule.
Have to wait for anything, yep?
Right, we'll just go site to site. Will be, be over there. I heard nothing on the grader since after the last meeting, so, other than that they're working on it.
They're working on it, yep. The Dodge, get a, a oil pan?
I, no, I haven't done that yet simply because we're using it to fuel the equipment. If we lose it, that's all we're using it for, so it's pretty limited use and I'd like to, unless it becomes a major catastrophe, I'd like to prolong it. Set some of the barn or the pan under it when it's not out fueling the Bubba's or the rest of the cars. We have a couple of things Kristen mentioned earlier there that need your guys' attention. The Grants and Aid is the same one that we discussed last year, which they were... The Class 4 gully erosion was one thing and we talked about, but we've got to wait for that brook to dry, so we're negotiating switching to the spot we just did on the Harret Road for this year, postponing the Class 4 section past your place for next year. And it's, it's an ongoing, there's also equipment that they're looking to, leaf blowers and rollers for a grader that they will fund portions of, which I don't, I don't know that we're ending. We don't have anything to run a leaf blower, you know, it's one that would go behind a tractor right now, so it's, um, just basically to keep the ditches open. So, we'll focus on connected segments of road if we can, and it'll be about the same block of money every year, $6,800. So, we'll just find little projects to fit the bill.
Would there be anything available on Chakart Road that we could help work on that connection between those two pieces?
Uh, there could, it's Class 4 gully erosion on Class 4 roads qualify, so yes, we could do some culverts, we could do some, you know, there's sections of that.
We've talked about that before because that's one of the roads that's not gonna, not, it may have to be used as emergency access depending on flood situation.
Regardless of the new water quality standards, we don't have to upgrade the road when we're required to maintain the flow of water, culverts, bridges, that type of thing, or anything that we can do to prevent gully erosion, so.
As long as it's still, still open, it's still our problem.
There's a section on the backside, it's, the road is the brook from here, so.
Can't get any worse.
Yeah, yeah, so. Yeah, we have discussed that in the past.
So, those are the two letters of intent. One is to participate in the projects pertaining to roads and the other one would be to potentially participate in the equipment.
Okay. So, in that, we're all, we're all in consensus that we want to sign these, right?
They don't have much time to think about it because I think Kristen asked them to leave them in tomorrow.
Yeah.
Drop the hook, Bob, there's only three spots. No? No?
Do we have a, enough gravel that you're going to cover this slate rubble with?
Currently no.
So, what are we going to do? Use ours up and then start buying?
My preference would be to start buying on this side of town and not truck from the pit to here and then end up from here back past the pit to go west. So, what I would suggest is we take what's at the pit and go west with it and purchase what's going on the Harret Road.
Can we purchase that right from Chet?
If he has a pile of equipment, probably. Currently, he does not.
Okay.
But he just moved his equipment back in, so.
Have you, would you talk to him about that to get that?
Yeah, I already have talked with him about availability and, you know, there's some other options, but they're all a lot farther away, so.
If either means mine, so.
That's right, it's just time and money.
And the money is all the same pretty much for the material, right?
Price of the product is about the same, yeah.
What would be the next option, Stanley?
Stanley, but he's, as far as I know, no pressure over there.
Screened. All screened, so.
Well, doesn't mean that it'll stay that way, but it means currently, I think that's okay.
Yeah. And he was like, where else you go?
Well, to have any volume, you either have to go to Hartford or SLC.
SLC or Hartford to get, to either one of those?
Yeah, that's a, I gotta believe about the same trip either way. I don't think it's a...
I think it took me just one hour to go from Telescope Yard over, get a load of stone and come back to the yard.
SLC is just one hour from Town Garage to back by the Town Garage, not to get out on a road and deliver it back to the Town Garage.
Yeah. Either way.
Either way, yeah.
The material, I mean the material.
It's got to be, that road's got to be finished before you move on to something else, doesn't it?
Which one? Harret Road? If we'll be finished with the rock, it won't be all gravel, Chuck.
We can get a reasonable driving surface with just a stone?
Dr. Ed, he was out and inspected us the other day. I mean, I showed you where I worked around there to get into some decent material on the quarry. It's not going to be smooth as gravel, but it's not all chunky rocky, there's a lot of...
It's, it's small, a thin slate like that, that'll break down pretty rapidly, won't it, Bob?
Yeah. It'll make mud and, if you pound it long enough, but it'll, it'll make a good base to gravel.
It'll make a decent road surface for temporary for gravel.
To spread gravel on.
Yeah, I'm not going to be cutting tires or anything out.
Right.
You know, it, we'll be better traveling than it was in April.
Okay.
So, they'll be on top of it anyway. Here you drill on some for a long time last summer and we can't, you know, you can't let our rental equipment set around and...
So, we gotta, we gotta stay focused on moving the slate and then once that excavator goes back, then, then focus on, on getting the top coat.
And we may have some days in the middle there where we can get some gravel spread, but it won't be completely gravel. We go through it every year, we went through it on the Wheat Road, remember? We gravelled it, smoothed it up, but it wasn't good enough because it wasn't 30 feet wide, you know, so. But it is a Class 3 town road and it meets the standard right now before we put the gravel on.
Oh, you're better off to pound that down anyway and then before you put a top coat on it.
We won't get any dust complaints, we won't get any speed complaints, so.
That's a couple.
Right, but if you, if you tried to put a finish on it, you'd have to grade it and grade it, you know, a few more times anyway.
We can't work miracles and all we can do is explain the facts and that's, that's the facts.
And then you're also going to try and do a culvert?
Gonna do the one in Spruce Grove and the one by Jane Delores.
Okay. So, you got a piece come already in order for that, to extend that one?
Yeah.
Oh my gosh, she's going to come out and have a bird, ain't she?
I don't know.
All right, we'll see.
Town right away.
Yep, so we just...
I'll call you.
Yep. So, but that's, that'll be good to get that culvert straightened out. We need to backfill around it? Is that, oh, you, you said it's settled because it's, it's pushing, it's pushing out. The wall's pushing out is why we...
We'll just extend it, move the wall out.
Yeah.
Remove, remove the guardrail. We'll probably have to have Lafayette put guardrail back on 153 if guardrail is appropriate.
Right. So, okay. But that, that shouldn't turn into a huge project anyways.
Should be fairly quick.
Right. And how big of a culvert are you going to put in by Delores and Jase?
I think just an 18-inch culvert, that's all that's, it's more than what's there.
Right, and as long as nobody covers up the ends, it feels pretty good.
And we'll go wider too. We'll leave some shoulder on the road and then we won't get that pounding down on the shoulders there because we'll have some mass against the outside edge. It's not supposed to be this much shoulder than sheer gravel, so.
And one other question, by where Tobin's old house was there, that culvert they got replaced that that guy talked to us about looks a lot smaller than what was there.
And he hasn't finished.
Okay. Is that going to cause us any trouble?
I don't think so.
Okay.
It's just going to do what it did the rest of it, yeah.
Okay.
And I gotta believe it's not finished. I mean, I, I don't...
It looks like quite a lot shorter of a culvert than...
It is, it's...
Than was there, but that was, you said it was once gabbed onto another and that's caused part of the trouble.
That was the problem at the beginning of that. It's always a debate when we maintain the driveway culverts. It's been, always been the policy that we don't, we maintain the flow of water through them, we clean the ends of them, we work when we're there to do the ditches, we do that. We do not replace the driveway culverts. That being said, there is some instances that arise where it started vanishing. We do, and what I've done is had them purchase the culvert and we install it while we're right there with the town equipment. And we've done that several times in the past and we've never been burned on. Anybody I've ever made that arrangement with has come down and wrote duty check and now they give one to Julie.
That's a good way to go.
There is one on the Wheat Road that's under discussion right now, we may do that. Because our current culvert dumps into their only replacement septic site that they have and the state's saying they have to do something, so. And so, we've got some stuff to do right there anyway and they may have agreed to do that arrangement if that's what we decide to do.
That makes sense, everybody wins.
Right.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Keith? Oh, Harry did.
I have an item for Keith. I'm working on the Enhanced Energy Plan for the town of Polat and my starting point is a draft that was put together by the Regional Planning Commission. And they made a statement in here that says that the, the town of Polat is committed to reducing energy use in transportation and will lead by example when practical by purchasing electric and biodiesel vehicles. Anybody know about that?
Nothing.
Urging use of public transit and offering parking right up. So, there's a lot of statements like that in here, another question. Here's a question you can answer.
We have parking rights.
We have parking rights, but I don't know that we have any demand for municipal vehicles that's electric or battery or anything like that. We just don't have any, any need or use for it.
Meter readers or anything?
There's not, there's not really much that, that could be replaced without it.
No.
Not in our world.
On biodiesel trucks, is that what you're, they're suggesting?
I'm thinking maybe a battery-operated grader or something, you know?
I'd say a battery-powered Dodge 550.
Well, I don't, I don't think, but we don't have any, any call for something that size. We don't have municipal vehicles, we're basically work vehicles and...
Well, that public transport around here, we can encourage people to use it, but...
Yeah, and biodiesel still...
But this is, this is part of their 90% reduction by 2050. So, you got to till 2050, who knows what's going to come out?
We need to train the cattle so people will know it now.
Well, none of us will be here come that time.
Well, no, it's going to be mandated at some point to be compliant with that. Basically, we are forced to comply in some of the ground processes. We have to provide, we have the latest technology, emissions and stuff like that, you know, we put a bid out, you know, it has to, bidders have to comply with certain things. But other than that, I don't, I don't foresee in the future that, near future anyway, that we're going to be in any...
Not the next 10 years anyway, thank you.
No, no, it's not.
These often are designed to force companies into expanding their technology, so keep that in mind. Like by states and federal offices passing these laws mandating energy reduction, 90% of that is forcing manufacturers to come up with something that will work.
Yeah.
So, that's more of the issue.
Your next next truck is going to have a, you know, battery backup option.
But they're, they're painting with too broad a brush because they've got...
They always do.
Polat, Polat in the same token as Burlington or... Pollitt, Pollitt in the same token as Burlington or St. John's where you're up there. Where they have small, they have meter readers, they have parks and recreation, they have, they have vehicles that fit in that category. We, we don't have anything.
The only heavy equipment technology was when Omni Force Casella to buy all, what? Propane and natural gas trucks, get rid of all the diesels, but it's not a viable option here. There's no place.
Well, something they may require too is any park and ride, I assume, would have to have charging stations. You know, I, I assume.
That would make sense, yeah. Okay. Gee, thanks for bringing that up.
Tom? Another, this is actually a statement and a question. Uh, at our planning meeting, we were asked about what was going on over across from the dump on the quarry where they were taking out rubbish for roadway. Uh, a person in the audience mentioned that they were filling in the old quarry. It was gonna make it a flat platform and very dusty and they were concerned about that. I didn't think that you guys were gonna fill it, but I figured I wanted to at least bring it up, let you guys know that.
That's another thing, that the rate, at the rate we're going, we're certainly not gonna fill it in our lifetime for sure, huh?
No, we put a lot of stuff in there, but if you look back to the, when you took possession of that quarry, what was Vermont League of Cities and Towns' first recommendation?
Yeah, they wanted it filled. They wanted the water filled.
And we, you agreed that that would happen over time, so we still will be, the intent has been to fill that quarry back in eventually.
With water or with, with stone?
With stone. But it's not a lake. It's a quarry.
It's a quarry.
It was mentioned that it was a lake.
No, it's a quarry.
It's a quarry, yeah.
I did share with the person in the audience at the planning meeting that you mentioned to Keith about doing berms on that anyways, so.
Yeah, when, when the excavator, before the excavator moves out, we're gonna, we're gonna have berms around and that's what most of those big rocks probably will go to. We had it once. We had them here. Somebody else.
Berms for what?
Just, just to protect the public from getting too close to the edge, so.
You do have public falling in there and taking stones.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
It's a good one.
God forbid a car goes off the road. There's something there to stop it before it ends up in the quarry.
So it's more for vehicle traffic, more for the people climbing in?
Yeah, it would be for vehicle traffic. But I think the intent is to just, just take the stone to build the road and then as, as we build an area biggest, then, then it could be certainly reclaimed or seeded or something like that, so that it wouldn't.
Just one of them.
Right now, we're using all the whole area and if we do a crushing operation in there to get some product that we can manage with our own equipment, we would need all that area anyways, so. Anybody else?
I told him to come to this meeting to protest if he was, if he was so inclined, but he, I guess he didn't show it.
Did you end up talking to him, Keith, or not? Hal said that he had passed on your information, it seems to.
I sent Al information and the other factor is, his main concern about that head wall, I think is historic. It comes from your father's side back across, you know. Um, it has failed and holds up to site of one fifty-three. That's why we started filling in on the roadside, if you remember, because that wall failed. And to be honest with you, I think the only thing holding the road up was the wastewater line that runs through there. And if that caves in, we've got some very valuable infrastructure, so.
Right.
It needs to be filled in so we don't have a.
That whole, that whole edge of the road needs to be filled in because the other side failed. That's why they did, that's why they straightened the road out, because the road used to be a narrow little track right up there, right along, right along that pile.
Yeah, so it's, uh, yeah, it's not like our intent is to fill the quarry, but we're working out of the pile, but our spoils, we go in the quarry eventually and we'll be filled in, so.
All right, thank you, Keith.
So, well, the last thing was that, um, town road and bridge standards?
Mm-hmm.
So, we can approach it one of two ways. We've been through it and essentially with my understanding, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but when we met with Chris Taft to send, basically, the state has now outlined these minimum standards that we need to adhere to for our roads and our bridges. And there are two regarding municipal roads and the other regarding class four road standards that are required by Act sixty-four that we have to agree that we will meet, which we already do. Um, and then there are one, two, three, four, five others that are options, options, but if we do not agree to meeting those standards, we will be less likely to be considered for permits and grants and things of that nature.
That is the same standard that you've adopted annually anyways, with, except you have options. One is guardrail, one is.
There is perennial stream, bridge and culvert standards, intermittent stream crossings, roadway construction standards, guardrail standards and driveway access standards, which we've adopted in the past, but now we just have the option whether or not we want to. So I got the email last week asking us to complete it. There was no date deadline, but we can either, I can either send it all to you for your review or we can, it's Keith's suggestion was that we.
Have we been going, these are all the same standards, even all these that are options were what used to be mandatory that we.
Right, and part of it is the new water quality stuff. We already do the road and bridge standards, hydraulic studies. We already do that. The only one under question would be the guardrail standard, which on the blacktop, we always meet anyway. On a class three road, we may avoid them, but in doing so, we're assuming they drive the speed limit, which is thirty miles an hour on a dirt road. So if we did not, we assume too much when we say that, but that is the standard based on thirty miles an hour. So I would circle yes on all of them that's in the.
Does anybody wanna review that anymore or? Okay, so, and I guess we, uh.
So, signatures are required on the second page.
That's what just the consensus is.
The consensus.
I think it's, it's. Standard, standard practice.
Tweet version of what you've been adopting annually anyway, and that you have options to, on five criteria there, argue with if you want.
I thought that it was a good sticking point that we will be less likely to be considered for certain aid and funding if we don't.
Just like with Bob's emergency management.
B-Trans is not gonna give you a bridge green if you don't need guardrails.
That was it for, super. Everybody's good with you? If you could hang around a little bit and we'll talk about this a little bit, that would be great. Thank you. Miss Assers?
I didn't receive anything, did you?
Uh, I didn't receive. I did stop in Monday. They're continuing to make visits pertaining to, um, grievances and they had some grievances that came in by mail, I guess, and were not. So they're work, working through all the ones that came in by person and by mail. And, uh, they think they'll have that done in time, so it won't be delayed on tax bills.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Town clerk's memo.
So there's no formal report, however, on the agenda, it was listed that there are two new law, there was a little note, I don't know if it was on yours too, but maybe Sue left it for me. Two new laws into effect as of July first, twenty nineteen. And I was provided with copies of that. Do you want me to quickly go over where they are?
Just, yeah, just.
Oh, you've got them too, right?
Yeah, we all have them. If you could just kind of give a synopsis of the two laws.
Well, the first one is from the Department of Health about the new vital records law that went into effect on July first. It significantly changes the state laws that govern vital records, namely birth and death certificates. The new law and rules will enhance the safety and security of birth and death certificates, providing better protection against misuse of these legal documents and reduce the potential for identity theft. Additionally, the changes streamline the entire statewide system for creation, storage and tracking of birth and death certificates. So basically, this will just impact anyone who seeks a copy of either of those. And I have not had a full chance to, I just saw these tonight too, that, um, Sarah Carpenter, who's the chair of the Rental Housing Advisory Board, um, submitted something as well, which I have to, I can't give a great synopsis of it right now, but I can include it in the minutes for those who would like to review it. It's like. There's something that's, they're looking to develop the, um, Rental Housing Advisory Board a bit deeper by January fifteenth of twenty twenty. And they'll be talking about recommendations for the design and implementation of a comprehensive system for the professional enforcement of state rental housing, housing health and safety laws.
That sounds good.
Those are two openings.
And.
You had comments from Ed?
Something from Ed?
Yes, Ed was not able to be here. He called me half an hour or so ago. And, uh, he did have, uh, some comments, uh. Uh, there's brush growing up behind this town hall here between the building and the, now what tank is that? Is that a?
Pump chamber.
Pump chamber, um, that he thinks if it's okay to talk to Randy White about knocking that brush down.
Have somebody, have somebody deal with that. We just don't wanna let it get ahead of us.
Right, it's, uh, he also, uh, I guess, had talked to Julie about who owns the propane tanks and the big one at, uh, wastewater treatment plant is owned by us, so we have the flexibility buying, servicing, uh, that location. The one at the West Pollitt Garage is owned by Blue Flame.
It's a hundred gallon tank.
Which is a small one.
Pollitt Garage.
Pollitt Garage, same thing?
No, no propane in West Pollitt.
There's just fuel.
There's fuel and fuel oil.
What heats that?
That fuel oil.
That's, it's fuel oil, okay. Um, there has been a need for a step ladder for use in here, changing light bulbs, changing batteries and, uh, smoke detectors or what have you. Um, Ed has researched one. I, I think it falls within their purview, but they wanted to send it by the board. Um, he's found an appropriate one for a hundred and twenty-five dollars, so. Just giving a heads up. I think they had been using his personal one.
Seems like it'd be necessary, so.
So, um, he also said Eminem, uh, makes me hungry, but, no, Eminem is checking out the A.C. at the library, um, and at the town hall. And Ed wondered, is there A.C. at the wastewater treatment plant or not?
I believe there is, but I don't.
Does that need checking or?
Routine maintenance.
Maintenance.
Never even paid attention.
Yeah.
That office is basically just that little office there, but I don't, I never even really paid attention to what it is.
It's, uh.
It's nothing crucial, but.
It stays pretty cool in there anyway. I'd be surprised if it ran.
Okay.
Never paid any attention to it, never felt how it turned out.
Whether to include that in the check.
You set thirty staff and it stays at that temperature whether it needs to warm up or cool down. They get some air handle right up and see how it types out, you know?
I did not ask him and he didn't offer anything about the library steps. Um, we did have a meeting, forget, last week was it actually?
On the steps?
On the steps and looked at the situation with, uh, one, uh, person. Um, saw what, it's a little more complicated than you think it would be, but, um, thresholds and what have you. But, uh, he didn't mention anything beyond that.
When are the bids due?
Two weeks.
I think it was, I was in the paper.
Two weeks from now?
That's what I, I remember him saying.
I believe it's sixteen.
Okay.
Oh, for that, that meeting, yeah.
I saw that, but I didn't, I didn't retain what they were doing.
Right. Uh, should we bring up about, uh, the refund to Brooke?
I know the treasures report, I guess we can.
Oh, I know that, okay.
Yeah, I guess. So if there's nothing else really as far as town clerk?
No, Sue said there wasn't enough to make a report, except for these, alerting people about these two new laws. Uh, which is real. The one on the, the death records, uh, or birth records, uh, um, funeral homes now advise people to not include date of birth in an obituary because hackers will use that. Um, so I think it's a response to stuff like that.
Unbelievable.
I mean, use a month.
Right, but.
Don't say that.
Right, the actual date.
Uncle George was born on September tenth.
Did Ed say anything about, uh, I mean, we're gonna talk about the Blue Flame contract, but was there any other, anybody else?
Establishing who owned the tra, tank.
So we can go ahead with, with that then?
Didn't say he had, he had any deals cooking, so.
I, you know, I was caught off guard. I'd just come in the house when he said he wasn't coming, so I, my head wasn't arranged to priorities of what to ask Ed.
Okay, sounds good.
Oh, my apologies.
Frank?
What was just read off is the town, what have you taxed to controlling and permitting and inspecting rental units?
No, I don't think so. That sounds a bit more, here, hand that over to Frank and then he can. Here, you can have a copy of it, Frank, and then you can report to us next week.
The Department of Health is asking towns to submit information concerning rental housing inspections conducted by town health officers as well as any enforcement actions to have been under the Rental Housing Health Code. This data, which reaches back to July first of twenty eighteen, is required from forward and will feed into a needs assessment the Department of Health must do to look at the number of rental housing inspections conducted and the types of violations pronounced.
That's not done yet.
Yes.
It is red hot, so.
Bob, more than ever.
I was just expecting most.
Yes. Would you like?
Yeah, give him that copy. Take it.
I got this, I got the picture. I didn't know that was done.
It sure is. I'll tell you more about it in Bob's monthly report coming up soon.
Coming up soon, next one.
Coming up next.
Five warrants to be signed. Did everybody look the warrants over yet?
Yes. What was the pipe from Ferguson, maybe Ferguson Water Works or something? What was the pipe for?
Culverts?
Was it? Okay, I, I assumed it was, but it just says pipe, it doesn't say culvert pipe and.
I should've said culverts. I know it's culverts, but the invoice says pipes and I was just.
It's spruce gum, not spruce gump.
Oh, whoops. Transporting myself back to the.
Cause I can, cause I can tell you the story my grandmother always told me when I was little about the spruce gum trees and the kids going to school would pick the spruce gum off the trees and that was their gum and they would chew it back and forth, walking back and forth to school and.
Oh, wow. I had an old kid's miracle book about making your gum out of spruce gum.
That's why they call that spruce gum.
So did we make a motion to accept the warrants?
Yeah, we had a second. Mike's looking them over. Yeah, we had a second, Mike's looking them over.
Okay, go ahead, Chuck. Second. Bob does?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
So you got that greater check locked up? Have you heard?
We're waiting to be unleashed.
It'll hurry either way.
We're gonna get the greater back. Probably won't be able to afford to get it back.
No. We're gonna use that for a unit barbecue soon.
You said recon was twenty grand?
Might be cheaper to tell them to keep it. Call it even.
Two hundred fifty, what's the new one? Two hundred fifty, three hundred? Okay, forty-nine checks, fifteen favorable, thirty-four count table. Blue Flame gas contract. I see that you did get, they did reevaluate the sewer plant?
They did give us a lower rate because we own the tank. What was it, two twenty?
I think.
I have my notes. I'll come grab real quick. I sent you an email, but I don't remember off the top of my head.
I don't remember the details.
The two twenty, two point two zero nine would be our fixed price plan for the wastewater treatment plan. And then they did, and they had recommended going with twelve hundred gallons, I think, for that budget plan. And then they recommended four hundred gallons for the garage. And they dropped that a little. They had it, before that, they had it at two point four two nine and they dropped that to two point four zero nine.
Because of volume?
Well, they, they should have had it a little bit lower before, but they said if we had the two accounts combined were over a certain amount, then they would be able to drop it a little. They sort of had treated them as two separate things.
It's all about volume and stop charges covering the expense of traveling.
So does anybody feel that we want to do more investigation or do we want to just lock in with the fixed price? It seems like we have very good service from them.
I like to keep them honest, but you need them dependable and you need to know and they do take good care of us. We don't have any risk of running out. That would be, that costs you more in the long run.
So you just made that motion?
Yes.
Can you reiterate that motion?
That's a motion.
To go with Blue Flame fixed, fixed that, fixed price for the two accounts?
Do you have those contracts still that I gave you last time so I can send them back? Or do I need to get them to come in and I can be authorized to sign them?
Oh, I...
I think I left them with you at the last meeting.
Yeah, I probably lost them.
Okay, so if we could get a motion for me to be authorized to sign those?
Can we include that in, can we include that in your motion?
Yes.
And Julie can, Julie can sign for it?
So we're...
I'm sure they'll send you new ones.
Fixed rate contract. Yes, and I'm authorized to sign the contracts.
I'm sure they'll send you new ones.
I'll just call Vernon and tell him. I'll send him a text right now. Wake up, get off the couch. Mark this down in your book.
Who seconded that?
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Post, carried. Still got the check for Nortrak until...
Well, the thing is, we need to figure something out with that because they, the plan that we have with them is we have like deferred payments, so we're not currently owing interest on that. But if we don't send something in or have a negotiation set in place soon, then we're going to be charged interest on that money.
The Power Plus Plan thing, yes.
I guess I would recommend that Mr. Mason make the phone call to tell them that we have a check, but until we know what our balance is, I mean, we do have a check, but we're not going to issue it until we know where we stand on the greater. That would be mine.
Yeah, and maybe request that they waive interest on this or something.
My idea, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks.
What I can see happening is that Power Plan is going to screw that all up and it's going to take you months to get it squared away with Power Plan, with John Deere Power Plan. My opinion is to give them the ten thousand dollars and fight about the rest when we get the rest of the bill because we know it's going to be at least another ten thousand dollars.
But they need to know how much extra it costs us.
I, there's no question that we need to fight about this bill, but I think that, you know, just for...
Because they're two different entities, really.
For accounting purposes, I think we need to pay that one. They did that work and we need to pay it because Power Plan is going to charge us interest and then you're going to be on the phone for hours to get that corrected. And then, then I think that we, we need to make it clear that, that we need to have a very serious adjustment on this bill due to the fact that, A, we had trucking involved twice and there was a lot overlooked when the, when the, they didn't do a thorough job when they, when they came, when, when it was there the first time. Because they should have changed the oil and they should have cleaned that screen and then they would have realized that, that it was more involved than that.
So my, I guess we, my recommendation then would be sort of to split the difference and make the phone call and tell them that we have the check and we are going to issue it, but we have issue with our service and we are expecting either a refund or a reduction on our next bill.
Okay, that, that makes good sense.
So they know it ahead of time?
Right.
But they, but we are making good on our bill. Does that make...
Yes, yes, that's, that's the right course of action, I believe, better than, than wait until after and then start fighting.
Yeah, fight now because it's going to be drawn out anyways.
It's going to turn into a mess, so. Does everybody, do you, do you, do you still feel the way you started, Chuck?
Absolutely.
Okay. On the other, then on the other side of that coin too, probably once or twice, so you, you understand how the process goes, so. You think that if we don't, if we don't pay them, you think we'll still be able to get them?
I'm saying that you're going to pay them, the ten thousand, the original bill was four. And then Keith found out that there was still an issue. I have a problem with them even getting ten thousand of our money until we know where we stand on a final bill.
So...
That would be, you can go ahead and vote, but I'll vote against it.
Okay, so I got another option. What I've found too, just going through a similar battle with a, with a big company, is that they have a claims number that you can call and tell them you're not satisfied. And when I called them, they put a hold on the account until that was settled. Have we tried that or not?
I am not familiar with that, but I can look into it.
Right, because I just had a big battle with a tenant sweeper and they're a nationwide company and I was fighting with them, so instead of going to the service manager, I called the number and got out to headquarters and they, and they have a claims adjuster out there. You know, she was able to put a hold on, on interest in anything that occurred until we battled back and forth and came up with a, an agreement. So I would think to call Power, call Power Plan and say, you know, I have a problem with this bill. I'm going to battle.
Should we call Nortrak's or Power?
I think I would call Power Plan because you get one more person in the loop and it, it actually worked pretty well to call directly and I got, I said I had a problem with the bill and I wasn't, yeah, I was disputing a bill, dispute center is actually, I think, what they called it, so.
Would you like Keith to make that phone call or me? I know he's busy.
Right, so if you, do you want to make it or just have Judy make, or Julie make it? Let's find it.
It's Rudy.
And then I'll let you know what has been said.
So if you could do that?
Yep, I'm gonna write myself one down.
Are you okay with that one?
She's gonna, I'm okay with her calling to make them aware that there's an issue, but I'm still against them getting any of our cash.
As long as she can get that put on hold until this, this dispute is, is cleared so that we don't end up with accrued interest, I don't think she, we should pay either. I'm, I'm very much in favor of that. I think that's a better way to hold the check, put a claims in with the dispute and say we'll settle us after the machine is repaired to our satisfaction.
Okay. So just so I make sure that I understand what is expected of me. I, I am planning on calling them and telling them that we have the bill for ten thousand six hundred or whatever dollars, but I would, I would like to put a hold on it because we are not happy with our service. They, as soon as the machine came back to us, it was not working and they should have caught, they should have caught whatever the problem was and we do not want to pay the bill until the final repair is done and we know where we stand and we are expecting a refund.
And their service manager has had a chance to adjust the bill for the...
Yeah.
Yeah, Frank?
That makes sense because you got more leverage if you put all of them on.
Everything, you hold everything back? Thank you. All right, perfect. Now, what kind of deal could you get on Misty Meadow? Call John Deere first and see how good you're feeling and then call Misty Meadow.
See, normally start small.
No, go away from this row.
Go right forward.
It's like, well, can I just beat John Deere out of ten grand? Don't be giving me no fifty cents business.
Listen, Misty Meadow, I'm paying seven fifty.
I'm mad and dehydrated.
I am very thirsty.
All right, what do you do?
Is the service, are we satisfied with the service we're getting from Misty Meadow?
I have no, I mean, I have no issue. I don't drink a ton of water here, but you know, the water here does suck, so.
No, I'm just saying they haven't let us run out and that type of thing because...
No, and the delivery guys are very polite. I have no beef with them.
It's not like we got ten options either, right?
It's fifty cents, a big bucket.
Right, so, and it's probably other than that up in a while and...
And there's two checks today. I mean, the garage uses more water than we use here. Our bill was seventeen fifty for the month and theirs is forty-four. It's, it's not going to be a big dollar amount.
Right, so...
But I just wanted to let you know.
Okay.
Nope, that's fine.
Financial year's been going, getting that all wrapped up?
Yeah, I mean, there's no video cameras in here because I'm Friday, I may have been spared.
That's all right. It's all better now, right?
It is, yeah. It's just getting used to doing it and, and Nemrick was amazing. And I'm really glad that we have the support plan through them because it was invaluable to me the last, you know, few days, for sure.
Excellent, well, that's great that you didn't, I mean, it's only the second and you're feeling pretty good about it? Happy Independence Day. Thank you, you too.
I like your sparkles.
I might add a little flash for you guys.
He walks in and goes, ooh, there's already some firecrackers happening out there. I said, really, where? And he's like, there are some red ones and blue ones and yellow ones. And I was like, where? I didn't hear anything.
Nothing from Bob?
Yes.
Oh.
Just got some sent here. So first up, the Emergency Management Director. R. Morgino attended EMD Roundtable in Rutland, June twelfth. Attended ChemPAC nerve agent antidote cache seminar at Rutland Regional Medical Center. Now, the Health Officer's Report. Participated in a webinar on bedbugs on June nineteenth. Informed resident on water testing. Completed a Rental Housing Code inspection and advised resident on Rental Housing Code.
Thanks. All good?
All good.
Okay. Wastewater Treatment Plant. So it appears now I've talked to, well, three people. We have Ian that's running it now. I talked to Vitums, which is Joe Merceno from up in Burlington. And I talked to Chris, somebody from Simon.
Ames, I think.
Ames, yeah. And Jeff was giving us a really, really good deal. So we're not even coming close. Ames was twice sixty-five hundred a month. And Jill's down to forty-five hundred, which is actually eleven hundred, not one thousand, like I just asked you to do, so. I just threw that out there quick just to get an idea, so. And I talked to Ian for a while about it too, and even if we were to, because that's the first thing out of his mouth. He says, well, Jeff wasn't doing himself any favors and, and kinda, he wasn't really doing you any favors because there's no way that, that I could do it or, he said, I would need at least what he was getting just to train somebody. Because he's charging what Jeff was getting and you're doing five days a week or so. He says, there's no way that, that even if we had a viable candidate that we could train, and then if we have a viable candidate that we train, we don't have any redundancy. We don't have any backup operator or anything like that, so. It appears, I've asked Jill to send down a formal quote because initially, a month ago, when I talked to her, she just called me and threw some numbers out and the first number was wicked high and then she called me back and said, I think I've come up with a way to do forty-five hundred. And she asked, we, we went back and forth on a couple emails last week and she's going to work up a formal proposal. And then we're, we'll see how we can tweak it to get it into, get it into a plan. And Julie came up and it looks like it's going to be a hundred bucks a month increase. Last year, we, we put some money...
So the six thirty was the figure for the whole year, so that was split into two payments for each unit. So the, if, if we didn't change anything, it was seven eighteen eighteen, is that right? Like if we, if we contributed the same amount from savings that we did last year, it would be seven eighteen eighteen?
Okay, yeah, seven eighteen eighteen, that's what...
So that's eighty-eight dollars a year.
But that was only with a thousand dollar...
But that was, yeah, that was a...
A month upgrade.
Thousand dollars a month upgrade.
And he was thirty-four hundred, right? Or thirty-three hundred?
I, I almost think it was thirty-three.
Thirty-three, so that's twelve hundred, okay, yes, because that was, that was, I was running it quick in my head when I'm talking to her. I'm thinking twelve hundred a month, it turns into a hundred, a hundred bucks at a hundred and twenty hookups or something like that, that's how I was running. So it's, it's going to be closer to a hundred dollars a year, not a month, a hundred dollars a year for that many hookups. And the other thing is, you said there's, there's like a forty thousand dollar account, right? But I don't dare really go after that much because it doesn't take much to blow twenty thousand dollars.
If you did, if you wanted to maintain the fee at six thirty, you would have to put fifteen thousand in.
Right.
Forty thousand dollars doesn't last very long when you do that.
Exactly, so...
Not in two years.
What I'm, what I'm looking at, in my first opinion would maybe to be to put some of that money in to soften the blow for the first year.
For, yeah, and then sort of...
And gradually keep raising the user fee until we get, because we really, I, I don't think it's a good idea to put any money out of that. Gradually keep raising the user fee until we get, because we really, I I don't think it's a good idea to put any money out of that. Because I think we really, from what I've experienced down there now, I think that fifty thousand dollars is, should be in 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 reserve. Because I, I don't think it'd take long to blow fifty grand if we had any kind of problem. Being, if if it went down and we had to punch, pump sludge a couple of whacks, ew, two or three whacks of sludge is gonna is gonna soak us, or, you know, if we have some other means. The other thing, I talked, I guess we talked to Chris a little bit about seeing if if we could upgrade so you could do remote monitoring. And I'm gonna talk to Jill a lot more about that to see if if that's a benefit, if there would be some way that we could, you know, if we spent, maybe if we spent thirty or whatever it would take to upgrade our sensors so that we could do remote monitoring. You know, our levels, everything, you know, we could be, we monitoring our our UVs and and switching pumps around or kicking pumps on and off, I I could, depending on the amount of money we spend, I'm sure there's, you could make it very easy to do a great deal of stuff remotely, but, you know. The other thing I'm gonna try and reach out to is that Walker lady, I think her name is Walker from the, from the.
Real Water.
Real Water.
Yeah. And see, see if there's some kind of grants or any funding out there to to bring up, bring up our monitoring and and you know, maybe, maybe there's some kind of money we can get that that we could do some, do some electronics work in the, in the plant. But it, I don't, I don't see any other options. You know, there's basically those two companies that I know of that 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 moni, that do the treatment.
Where is the closest that Jill also does?
Jill has a guy right now in West Rutland who lives in Poltonley.
Okay.
Um, he's Savage. And he, uh, he actually went to work for GE, but he still monitors, monitors the the West Rutland facility, but he would be the chief operator running this. And she has somebody that's willing to relocate to Rutland, that would be our guy, running under that Savage guy. And Simon has, well, they do as much as, I think they do Wallingford and they do the wire.
Doorset wire system.
Doorset wire system. Just being reminded, I've forgotten already.
Yeah. So, Frank?
Is the major part of the cost because the water is treated, processed, so it can go back into the river? Is that one of the big parts of the plant?
It's just labor, it's just labor Frank, I mean, you gotta be there, close to twenty hours a week and.
But the, the problem is, is if the water's not good and it's going into the river, that's the, that's the real, that's like the, that's like the bad.
I guess, but there's, there's not really much options, I mean, there's no room to put big lagoons or anything like that there, there's other, there's other systems, that was our all decided way back in the eighties.
As the plant gets older and older, obviously, parts and, is there any obsolescence that's gonna be popping up or it's gonna be?
No. I, not that I feel, do you Keith?
The only thing that may come up on the forefront is the phosphorus monitoring.
Right, and that's.
We're small enough now that they're not making us do it, and if they mandated that, they would provide funding for it as well, that's.
But I, I mean, the, the actual plant is pretty stone simple for, for treatment and so, so I've learned through, through my years, but Keith will, I mean, it, the big rotating biological digester there that, it it just, it runs very slow and the the growth is on there and and I mean, there's intricacies of keeping the flows and and the chemistry right in that to make everything work and then it basically settles out in the clarifiers and goes through the UV and as long as it settles out properly and I mean, the two, the two different people that were there looking at it had some ideas on how we may be able to make our clarifiers function better than than they ever have since they were installed. And that, that could be a huge plus, you know.
FYI, it's all going through one now.
Is it, you you switch it over to one and?
With running sixty-five hundred gallons a day discharge, it's supposed to be able to put twenty thousand through each, so we're putting it all just because that second clarifier seems to be the problem, so it's a, it's an attempt to see what happens. It's an experiment right now.
And Chris was saying that that it could very well be because the flow is so low that it it doesn't act properly, it needs, it needs a certain flow rate to go through and I mean, he, he obviously has been in the business for quite a while, he, he seemed very knowledgeable and it was a good hour we spent with him for sure.
Involved there when, uh, they did it.
When they took it over from before.
How much more would be needed to have it running at optimal? That's the question, how many more users that would boil down to property?
They could probably take double of what we got now and still have a pretty good buffer zone.
Right, it could take four times what we're just.
Yeah, actually four times, forty thousand gallons and, and we're less than ten right now.
And would it run better with the larger boat?
We don't know it would run better, the design says it will handle it and right now be, it's, it's a guess, you know, it's because it's not running that much, it's, would it run better, you know, there's there's ideas from, from people that did understand the system, that it, that it could potentially run better, but we don't know that, but.
But I mean, half of the cost that we're considering is travel time to to hire someone, because we don't have someone local that's certified to be able to do that, so we're paying someone that is certified to operate the plant, to travel forty-five minutes, spend an hour and a half doing the testing process and then travel forty-five minutes back, so ha, they have to charge you to travel here as part of their expense and pass it on, so that's part of our costs. If we had someone local that was willing to operate the plant, that was trained.
If you do the math, I mean, so if it's twenty hours a week to to basically maintain the mass, times four is eighty, eighty hours a month.
What are you trying to come up with, the price, the amount of money you pay for somebody an hour?
Fifty bucks.
Fifty-six dollars an hour.
Right.
Fifty-six, fifty-seven dollars an hour. And you're not gonna find somebody to do that sort of stuff for under sixty dollars an hour, and if you are, you're doing alright.
Right, and and, uh, they would have to have insurance and they would have to have a license, so.
They're not even making that much money now.
So, right.
Jeff was.
So you really, there's a need for more users and more income into the system to help us pay for any more.
That, that would, that's the only way.
With inflation and everything going forward, that's really to prevent.
If you can find a way to get two hundred and fifty people hooked up to that system, life would be great.
So more rental units, more, more users no matter what, over in West Palm?
Yeah, get another hundred and twenty-five people on that system and and it would be, it would be wonderful, I, I think at a hundred and twenty-five people, the, the system would run probably quite well. That would be up in maybe around twenty thousand gallons.
Should, should that be a goal in the town plan and in the unified bylaws? To set it up so that area would.
You kinda set yourself up when you make unattainable goals Frank, so.
Yeah, but, but if we're gonna do this, we looked at this one time and it was land trust stuff up north.
Yeah, okay, you think about it, write us a report for the next meeting Frank.
Continue getting your contacts and contract and then.
By the next meeting, I should have a, a real proposal from, from Vitums and Jill and we'll work with that and I'll, I'll send it to you Julie and get your input and stuff and we'll see where we're at, so.
I'm convinced the best thing to do economically is to get it set up so that you can store through the weekend and play catch-up five days a week so that you can turn the plant off for the weekend. And you're not discharging, so you don't need anybody there, you don't need any sampling, you just run the RPC unit, but you don't discharge.
That's exactly what I'm gonna talk to her about after your discussion.
Right, and then if you can do remote monitoring, you can substantially reduce the hours that are gonna be needed to operate, be there with alarm systems and, you know, somebody's gonna have to be on call, but they're not gonna have to be there seven days a week like they are right now.
Every three days, could go through the process.
So you're, that's, that's where your, uh, savings are gonna come from, right there, I think, I don't see any other.
And once, once, once I get something come working with Jill, I'm gonna, I'll probably invite her down again and we'll have another meeting and and we'll see, see, look at our alternatives to to get this tightened up and and it, it sounds like their business, they're involved in a lot of monitoring and stuff, so I, I think they would be able to provide us with some direction on what, or at least tell us what are the viable, the most, where the best place to start is with the monitoring systems and stuff like that, so.
And the cost benefit analysis with the electronic monitoring, how much would that save you on your payroll?
Right, that's what we're thinking about, so we'll talk to them about it and, and we'll get more information from there, so. Guess that's about it for wastewater, can't think of anything else.
Everything levels.
Older unfinished business?
Just Blue Flame Contract was the only thing, but we already discussed that.
One, one thing that I think about quite often in the morning when I drive by is we need to come up with a plan on what we're gonna do with the store next, the old store lot next to there because.
It ought to be at least, we need didn't trim it up a little.
And we gotta figure out, that, that decking probably needs to get removed, some kind of fence or something up because all of a sudden, somebody's gonna, there's, there's, there's a potential for.
Somebody falling through it.
Right, you know, it's, it just keeps rotting and it's.
Or at least jersey barriers right across connecting the two points.
Right, you know, we need to, somebody driving by there, get, get some ideas, may, maybe just put a little fence up or something, I don't know if there's any, you know, put a fence up around the, the foundation there so no one can get in there and get get up on it and fall down or something like that, we need, we need to consider some options, I don't want, I'd, I'd hate to put like snow fence up or something that looks real gaudy, but we need to put something that's kinda safety and kinda maybe dress up the front or something so it doesn't look.
Can we just rip all that stuff down?
Well, yeah, but then you got three, then you got three walls of a cellar hole.
Oh, there is a cellar hole.
Yeah, there's three, there's three sidewalls boarded up, the one end is open, so. And there's also dirt down there that, you know, we could, we could dress up a little bit so we could keep it moved.
Cause the waste I saw, I think, would be to rip everything down and fill it in.
And that, that may be an option, that may be our best option. Just kinda grate it all off and have a because in that, undoubtedly, if there was anything to be built there that would be involved in the sewer plant, that would be of no use. Now, it's just one more thing for us to think about, so, any new business?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, well, this is in regard to, of course, uh, five forty-one Briar Hill Road. Uh, I asked for the legal fees and Julie very nicely got them for me. And up until June twenty-fourth, they're eight thousand eight hundred eighty-one dollars and fifty cents. And, uh, I imagine that's all Thra, John Thrasher. Uh, there's an abatement hearing on, uh, July nineteenth at six thirty, which is the na, same night as the Select Board meeting, I believe. And.
It's July sixteen. It's July sixteen?
Sixteen, okay, sixteen, sorry.
Yep.
Thank you. And has there been a site visit?
Not until the meetings come before the, uh, board.
The Civil Authority?
The IB.
No.
No.
The abatement meeting? Is that, that scheduled for the same night as the Select Board meeting?
Six thirty.
Oh, it's half an hour prior to the Select Board meeting, okay.
Is that, so is.
So there hasn't been a site visit at this point?
I didn't hear the answer, has there been a site visit?
Not that I know of.
No.
Okay.
Assessors haven't visited yet.
Will there be one before?
Not till after the, not till after, the, the Board of Civil Authority will meet, they'll hear both sides and then they'll go do a site visit, three people from the Board of Civil Authority go and do a site visit, that's.
Wait a minute, this is an abatement.
Before we decide, right?
The Board of Abatement, he's asking for an abatement of the interest and penalties on his taxes from last year. That is separate from the grievance.
From the grievance, I'm sorry, I'm confused.
Okay, cause I have no detail on that, so he's only asking for.
He currently, he is asking for an abatement of penalty and interest on his twenty eighteen nineteen taxes.
Okay.
Okay, Board of Abatement, that's, I'm, I was confused about that, thank you for clarifying that.
And interest.
Right.
Thank you.
Now, we're aware, under, the lady that I talked to said that a member of the Assessor's Office, now that we've made the switch, can be part of that board.
Can be part of the board?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, any new business?
Yes. Um, a week ago Saturday, I was contacted by Tom Collard representing his mother-in-law Sylvia Kramer about, uh, animals running at large. I'm also, beyond the Select Board, I'm also the, uh, highly paid pound keeper, large animal pound keeper. So, uh, anyway, I, uh, I was really busy on Saturday, but I went down Sunday morning and assessed the damage that animals had caused to Sylvia's lawn. Um, while I was on my way to Sylvia's, I actually witnessed the same animals being rounded up that morning, um, I'm told that was the third or fourth time in a couple days that they had been loose. Um, technically, I guess this would be a fence viewer's situation, but the fact is, they weren't in fences at that time, they were being kept in a barn in, contained in a barn and they were escaping from the barn too, so. Either way, they were at large, uh, running up and down the blacktop and running on neighbors' lawns. Um, since then, um, I, I was able to contact the person responsible for them. And I'm saying the person responsible for them because I'm being told that technically, he doesn't, he's taking care of them and making use of them or whatever for the, the, the children to, uh, to work with at the four H or something of that nature. But I believe LJ Palmer does not own any of them. Um, I've gathered information saying that Lewis Home Farm owns two of them. Chesna Sterns owns two of them. Cindy Hosley owns one of them and Brian Clark owns one of them, so. It's, there's, there's a whole bunch of people involved with this. Uh, meanwhile, I, I took pictures of some of the damage to Sylvia's lawn. I got a bunch of details from Tom and his wife Cindy. And then I went, I commenced to try to look up what I could gather from the internet, which I was not happy with what I was finding, so I contacted Deb here, asked her and Sue what they could come up with. Um, it took a, a couple days, they got back to me. Um, some of the literature that I read through was, I didn't see a date on it, but it had to be back in the eighteen hundreds. Dealt with railroad crossings, uh, railroad building fences, um, uh, impound fees of two dollars, uh, up to five dollars, up to ten dollars, different, uh, processes and procedures, so I, I contacted Kristen because I did find, I found some contradicting statements in there and I wanted to handle it properly to try to be fair to everybody. Um, there was a couple statements that said, um, you know, animals at large could be impounded, they could be impounded by anyone because they were running at large. Um, there was also another statement in there that the owner of the animals could be held accountable for the damages. But there was, there was a whole bunch of stuff in there that. But there was, there was a whole bunch of stuff in there that did not pertain to any of this. So, anyway, I was trying, I contacted Kristen and she was contacting the V L C T to try to have their lawyers read through. The legal implications to make sure that we handle this properly since I'm being told that our town attorney represents the Lewis Home Farm also in the sale of their property, so. It may be a conflict of interest to ask him to get involved with this, so we, Kristen, I followed up with her tonight and she still has, had not heard back from the League of Cities in Town. Because the person who she was put onto was on vacation and put her on to another person, so. Basically, where we are right now is I was contacted this afternoon while I was at work and Tom Collard was very upset with good reason. Three of the six cattle were loose again, running at large and so from frustration, I just asked him if he had the capability to impound them. Because anyone is entitled to impound them, he later contacted me, said that he had them contained and they were being fed and they had water and they had cover, shade, so. We need to know where and how to proceed from here, but three of the six animals, I was contacted by, in a roundabout way, by Shannon Hosley-Landon. Wanting to know what she could do to try to rectify the situation and I told her that she needed to wait till after the meeting tonight. If she, if Tom Collard allowed her to take the animals, that was up to him, but as far as I was concerned, they were considered impounded right now and we would follow the process.
Well, according to Article three, section thirty-four fifty-one of the State of Vermont State's Fence Laws. Lost it, let me scroll it back up there, so if a person suffers his or her meat cattle, horses or swine to run at large on the highways or commons, any person may impound them. The owner shall pay the charges of the impounder and pound keeper and the pound keeper shall not release such animals until the charges are paid. So. If the owner of the animals within twenty days pays the pound keeper, his or her fees, including his or her reasonable expenses for advertising and the reasonable expense of keeping with the impounder's fees, the animals shall be released. Otherwise, they shall be sold by the pound keeper at public auction and the available shall be applied as in case of the sale of beasts taken doing damage when the owner is unknown. So, but again, the fees are no more than two dollars, no less than ten dollars, I believe.
No more than ten, no less than two.
Correct, yes, sorry, thank you. For animal? It doesn't say, so that's where, so the other.
I believe it is, Julie, I believe.
So, the other, the other potentially.
The select board has dealt with my chickens.
The other potentially applicable section of this states that a person who knowingly permits his cattle, horses, sheep, goats, swine or domestic fowls to go upon the lands or premises of another. After the latter has given the owner notice thereof, shall be fined not more than ten nor less than two dollars. Such person shall also be liable for the damages suffered which may be recovered in a civil action. So those were kind of, when Bob and I have been reviewing these laws, those were the two of which we felt out of all of these were most applicable. However, when I reached out to the league, I said, you know, these are great, until you need to use them, what, can you please help us out with these? So, it seems as though I'm not a lawyer, but it seems as though the folks that are in charge of these. Potentially, in charge of keeping them in, could potentially be approached and held liable for making the damages or rectifying them.
Also, several, several times in there refers to the select board.
Yes.
To make a decision, immediate decision on.
If the owners can't.
Right, if they can't, if they can't come to an agreement, the select board will make the decision and the decision will be final.
So.
Frank has a question, Frank?
There was an issue of this in West Pollock, because we had a bunch of horses and occasionally they would get ran bunches and bust through the fences and go across the lines all over the place.
Sound familiar, John?
And, and, but I'm glad I knew this because we were out fixing lawns all across the neighborhood to get them back to where they were. From hoof damage and stuff that was in the lawns and, and, you know, and we tended the fences, made sure they had electric and got, you know, more power to them occasionally and the horses would just get out. And we'd be out across the neighborhood fixing the lawns with vets and they could neighbors, but you also gotta follow up and fix the lines if you damage them.
Right, right, I did speak with L.J. Palmer in depth, on Sunday afternoon, he came to my house. I was very, very stern about what he was responsible for, what he could be responsible for should anything horrendous happen and he said that there was. Originally, they were gonna transport the animals back to the Lewis Home Farm in Rupert, but then he apparently decided that they could. Put up double gating and everything to make sure that there's no way that even if the animals got out of the pens they were in, they wouldn't get out of the barn, well, that worked for four or five days. And this afternoon, the, at least half of them were out again on Sylvia's lawn, so.
And they were also in the road.
And they're also in the road.
I saw, I saw three in the road when I came home.
Right.
Did you, you have them, you have those three impounded right now, has anybody reached out to you or?
Yeah, we've been contacted by Shannon Hosley-Landon and we've been contacted by Ches.
Chesna, Chesna Sterns?
Yeah.
I don't know if he's married.
And what do they say?
They wanna come get them.
Do they wanna fix the lawn?
Uh, I think, to back up a little bit, Shannon's pigs got out and destroyed the lawn by eighty by a hundred foot area last fall. Kept telling Sylvia she would come and fix it, come and fix it, come and fix it and I have been the one that has fixed it, a couple of weeks ago, I showed Bobby that area. These animals unfortunately have gotten out when it's been very wet and there is ruts and hoof prints throughout her whole property now. It needs a good, you call it vibrating roller to go back across and level it out. And I also shared with Bob that I think that being a farm boy raised on a farm and our cattle did get out. You'd go back and fill those dirt in those holes before you would do that rolling and fix it up. Person is only as good as their word and for twenty-some years, we've heard that they're gonna come fix Sylvia's lawn. They haven't followed through on any of the times that this has happened. I think the only way we're gonna have a resolution on this is to have an outside person come in and fix the lawn and have them square up the cops. That's how, that's where I'm at, Mike, in the board, because I'm the one that has to chase the cattle. I had to detain the cattle because there was no one reachable today and when Bobby told me I could impound them, that's when I put them in a pen.
So, so you're not, you're not ready to release those cattle until you have a program in place to have the lawn repaired?
That is correct.
Because you don't believe.
I believe that their word has not been followed through properly and so.
So if they came.
These people that Bob has mentioned that have owned it, Brian Clark showed up one day and walked the lawn uninvited. Cindy's never been to Sylvia's house in these last two weeks at this event. Louis Holstein, George, I think, stopped there one day and just looked, but not any person, not any one of them said, what can I do Sylvia to fix this for you? Let me detain the animals and then I'll be right back and fix your lawn, so I'm looking for a solution, I don't wanna go a civil way, I just want it fixed. I mean, anyone that's ever owned an animal and said that they've never had them escape, hats off to them. But let's just face it, every now and then it happens, but when you have five times in four days with the same animals, they should have been loaded on a trailer. And we went back to last fall, we had an issue with, again, a non-owner of the farm, but he had a bull, rammed my truck. And again, tore up Sylvia's lawn, I did get compensated for him fixing my truck after the bull took. A whole bunch of scrapes and scratches and dents on the front corner of my truck that day out there in the yard and Bob and I had multiple correspondence with that one. So, I guess as a local citizen, what's our rights to, one, safety of the neighborhood? I mean, I don't want bulls or cows running around that are gonna hurt people, we've already had an example last year, that one did get disposed of and sent to the beef pen, we got told. How do we protect the property so it's not continuously daily or every other day or once a week getting demolished or rutted up? Because it's pretty hard to mow that every time there's a hoof track, has anyone ever sat on a lawnmower? And I don't want no problems, but when, when they're in the road tonight, how many cars were with you, Mike, when you went by, two, three?
Couple behind me, yeah.
And there was another six or eight before I got told by Bobby that I could impound them. And they kept going back and forth from Sylvia's yard back to the road and from the road back into Sylvia's yard.
Have you called the state police?
I tried to reach out to David Carr today on his cell phone and was unable to get any contact. But I don't believe it's a state trooper's thing, I do believe it falls under the town side.
The town, the town has, I mean, there's, there's laws, I just wanted to follow up and find out exactly how the process we needed to go through to handle it.
I mean, again, I think it goes back to this. Person.
But until we have a comment back from the League of Cities in Town, there's really, at this point, I don't feel comfortable making a decision at the select board level until we have advice from the League of Cities in Town. I don't know about the rest of you guys. John, do you have a comment or opinion?
No, I think it's the person's responsibility to take care of their cattle, stuff happens, trees fall down, wind blows, fences break, cattle come and heat.
Trees fall down on fences, it happens, but.
The cows get out, but the people need to be responsible.
But you're still responsible, that's life.
Right, I, the gist I'm getting is there's one person inevitably taking responsibility for all six of these animals. So, following up with, with L.J. Palmer, he's somehow gotta make it, you know, make it right with Sylvia Kramer before. They would release those animals from impound, the town, you know, there is fees and all that type of thing, but, yeah, just sending. Your youngsters over with a shovel or whatever is not acceptable to just patch up hundreds of divots in her lawn. So, it probably should be handled by a professional contractor, professional landscaper and be fixed and they would. Receive the, a bill. I just wanna make sure we, we go through the right process, I, the last thing I wanna do is see the animals get shipped to auction, but. We need to make sure that everybody's, everything's handled properly and taken care of. Frank?
Yeah, the statutory guidelines, there's a limit to that and then the other side of the coin is you have a civil issue, which is property damage or bodily injury. And when we insure the lot of farms, the firewater's insurance policies would cover if you had got an animal out, got in the road, a car hit, for example. And it was, the insurance company would pay for that because that was liability, property damage and bodily injury issue. And so, I don't know what parties have for insurance, but sometimes a homeowner's policy will cover this for other animals, like a dog bite or things like this, so.
Right, right now, whilst we, the only decision that we can really make right now is whether or not we'll leave them impounded until, until satisfactory compensation has been made.
Right.
Does that, does that seem reasonable?
Are these show animals that'll be needed to be?
That's, that's the tough part, John, they're four H animals, they're yearlings, I mean.
But I mean, will this, incent them to the other side to resolve this if they want these cows to go to show, or is there no shame?
Well, I'm gonna say that they would incentivize me not to be here because I would have fixed it or my father would have put a thirteen upside at something, but. I, yeah, I guess, I guess it is a chip that maybe it would incentivize them because they gotta be at the show in August, that they get them back out because you gotta train them. I mean, they need time to work with them, but I don't wanna, I'm not here to be a bad neighbor.
Right.
Is there a fence?
If they're that hockey, chances are they're not working with them.
Well, you could walk up to them.
There is, but the road, they just go over the road and walk up the road.
Just like tonight, they kept going in and out, when Mike went by them and the other car went by them, they didn't really run until people honked the horn that don't understand animals and then they would run back up into the yard. You know, most people, they were on the other side of the road for a little bit and then a car came up behind them and pushed them back to the other side.
Going, going back to what Frank was saying, reading through the law, if the animals are running at large and the person, anyone responsible for them, so it wouldn't have to be the owner, but anyone responsible for them. Is not there, then the owner slash person responsible for them is responsible if someone were to hit them in the road or anything like that. But if the person dr- responsible for them or the owner is driving them up the road because they're bringing them back to the farm or whatever and someone hits them, the person that hits them is responsible. So there's, that's why I wanted to consult with the League of Cities in Towns to make sure, because if somebody hits them down there, I was told that they were being driven back up the road by, you know, by a pickup. To drive them back to the farm because they had strayed so far south down the road and so I just wanna handle it the right way and be done with it and not have it come back to haunt us, so.
Okay, can we move on, make a decision on this?
So how are we gonna handle it, what if, do you have a, do you have a stand to take, what do you, how do you feel? Leave them, do you wanna make a motion that we leave them impounded till they, till they make restitution for the damage occurred? Or?
They what, thirty dollars?
At least until we hear from the League and City in Town.
Okay. Okay, so Chuck wants to make a motion.
Keep, keep the animals impounded until such time as we hear from the League and City in Town and they advise us what we're supposed to be doing. But there's still three that are still at large.
There's three more that could, that could inevitably break out.
I think there's more cattle in the barn, I have not been a known neighbor walking the barn.
They probably won't be residents of West Pollock much longer.
You have the cattle?
I got a feeling they'll probably be taken out before they escape from the barn again.
So do we have a second on that motion? Do we leave them impounded until, until we get legal counsel?
Tom, do you have the, the sufficient stuff to keep them for a few days until hopefully this is straightened out?
I am uncomfortable with them not having a roof over their head, I could build a fence tomorrow and put them where they could have a need to by mid-morning.
But they're in a, and they're in a safe.
They're inside.
They're contained.
They're contained and they are, they were definitely in the shade today when they came in, so, yeah, I can make it to where they would be comfortable.
So I've been, my tardiness is because I was out of town without my computer house sitting and then working during. house sitting and then working during, at night and then working during the day, so I could only just get to send that email yesterday, to which I got the response today that she was out of the office. And so, I just forwarded the email to the proper person today, but tomorrow I can make a phone call too, to the league to try to expedite it. So, that's why I just, I wasn't able to, wasn't around with my work stuff until then, but I'll make a phone call tomorrow.
Do we keep them impounded?
Yes.
Bob will second that motion. Is there any more discussion about that motion? All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Carried. All right, so that's, that's the short term...
I do have a question on that.
Yeah.
I don't wanna wait two weeks for the next meeting.
No.
Is this something that I, once I hear through Bob?
Bob and Kristen will be, will be working on it.
I'll contact Bob as soon as I hear. And I'll call first thing in the morning tomorrow and then I'll contact Bob as soon as I hear.
Okay.
I mean, perhaps, yeah.
You said there's, it's a 20 day?
So, the only, the reason why I'm very hesitant is because these are from the fence viewing laws and all of these laws pertain to fences. And so, a lot of these kind of, and I can, I can send you the, the laws as well if you'd like, but a lot of them are very, very pertinent to fences. And without fences in the mix, that's why I kept asking, are there fences? Because a lot of this is in relation to that. So, but seemingly the big one is that the keeper of the cattle is completely responsible for the damages. So, I think that that's...
A lot of them, the way they're written, they, they either don't pertain to it or they're, they're prehistoric. I've heard from other select persons, board members from other towns that they have written new laws that, that have corrected it because not everybody is a farmer anymore and every, not everyone has, has the animals. Years ago, the way they were written is, is though everyone had a cow and everyone had a, had chickens and that type of thing and that's...
As soon as we get the information, then we'll, we'll act, so.
I appreciate that.
Any other new business?
Well, actually, this is old business.
Okay.
But I wanted to ask about the proposed library project. Could anyone tell me how much money has been spent on the architect, the plans for the proposed...
For the access in the back?
Yes.
And you could, might be able to know from Ralph is, is all, I...
I think the most recent ones that I've had were for the front steps.
Okay.
But I can look up and get that information if you would like to...
That would be great, that would be great. At their last meeting last month, the library board met with Ed and the architect and reviewed the plans and had a question and answer. And so, I'm, I'm wondering if we could, before we go forward and spend any more money on this particular solution to the problems over there, could we put it on the agenda for the select board at the next meeting to open it up and have people able to come and ask questions about that path moving forward?
We could certainly put it on the agenda. Well, we, we talked to Ralph about that, got that proposal and then the, the numbers were, were so high that we didn't feel that it would, you know, we didn't know how to, what the next step would be. So, if you wanted to come to the, the next board for the agenda, you can make arrangements with, and, and anybody that had questions or comments, we could, we could certainly discuss it for a while and, and go review those plans again, so.
Do you want me to just put it as general?
General discussion.
Like old business, keep, like at the end of the meeting, Q and A, or do you want yourself to be on earlier in the meeting?
Uh, it'd be a weird...
Okay, I'll give the pre-requester.
Okay. And if you could just send a message to Ed to make sure he brings all the materials associated with that. Julie?
This regarding the prior issue with the cattle?
Uh-huh.
Just in case I've made friends on that side of the table, I'd hate for that to happen. How about policies? You've talked to other select board people in other towns who have written new policies.
Well, I don't think they even, I don't think it was a town policy. They're telling me that the laws have been adjusted. It wasn't what we got, that's why I wanted to make sure that that was the most recent laws, because some of those were pretty prehistoric.
Yeah. I was just wondering if Kristen would ask if they had, you know, maybe there are sample policies that V L C T has that towns could adopt that would address these, these issues?
Yep.
They're a resource for that?
That was in my email just stating that though it's wonderful that there are current laws in effect, it seems as though they're not quite doing our town the justice and service that they need. So, wondering if there's been any thought put into updating these to be more relevant to where we're at now, if there is.
And if something needs to be addressed on the state level, then, you know, we have state representatives. They've, they've done stuff for us recently.
So, does anybody have anything in the public comment portion of this meeting? Frank?
To extend, nothing other than to extend that thought, there's a lot of the laws that are created or policies oftentimes get tested in the courts. And so, there's a lot of issues that happen like this before that have been through for the court process and that's what, when, that's what you want to follow.
They should be able to tell us that.
If the track record is established, you just hook onto that and write it.
Tom?
Has Eric commented to the board on the Rutland Regional Transportation meeting?
We haven't had any input that I know of.
Okay, I'll, I attended that meeting with him last, last Thursday. It was at the Rutland Regional Airport. They are trying to promote, you know, the airport amongst our towns in Rutland County. It came up that maybe we could put a link on our town page for the airport in Rutland. They make three flights a day down to Boston and they make three flights a day back from Boston. They're looking for, you know, to promote their business by all means, but I think that's a, that could be a silent offering that our folks in our town don't even know is happening. So, is there, how would we move on?
You'd have to talk to Elizabeth, right?
Do you know Elizabeth Gibson?
I do.
So, she handles our town's website, so usually it's a request to maybe add a word about something, so...
And the select board's okay with that, then?
It would seem, seems reasonable, it's...
Okay.
I think the success of Rutland filters down to the success of Pollock.
Everything is a benefit.
But it was a good meeting and it was, I thought it was well attended, so, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any public comment?
I think Ashley has a question in regards to where we as select board stand in regards to Ashley Cameron's...
Okay, I can tell you what I, what I've been briefed on. I asked Hal to, to go over the details of the case with, with our attorney, Ms. Bant, and he hasn't got an opinion back from her yet, but as soon as he does that, we'll continue.
Hal sent me an email at quarter six yesterday morning. I don't know what he's doing on that early, but, and he said that the attorney from Manchester that he's talking with, she is gonna have an opinion by the end of the week.
Yep. And then we'll proceed with that, but we didn't wanna proceed till we have legal counsel on, on the correct...
Yeah. No, I...
Right. That's, that's where we stand with it.
General audience tonight, that's all I'm here for. I would, I was coming in to see where, what was happening because it's been a month.
Yeah.
And he sent me that email yesterday morning at quarter six, so...
He, he quite often will send me just little updates on where he is with difference, with different things. And that's what his update was, that he said that she would have basically the same thing.
Sent me the same thing.
Right. That she's, she's reviewing it and, and giving us, and gave us opinion by the end of the week, so.
Yeah.
And then we'll proceed with, with the, with the case and go from there. Thank you. All good? Somebody wanna make that motion?
Make a motion adjourned?
Chuck wants a second. Thank you all for coming. Have a good night. Happy board.